You're listening to the anointed selves of Bobby beautiful music. Release your musical tracks today. You're listening to the anointed selves of Bobby beautiful music. Release your musical tracks today. Welcome to the journey.
And I hope everyone is doing well this evening. And I do apologize, like I said. Okay. Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Bible study. And review of Numbers chapters 28, 29, 30, 31, and 32. And without further ado, Sister Gail is going to carry us to the throne of mercy. Sister Gail, please.
Thank you. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this night, oh God. We thank you, Lord, for this Bible study, oh God. We thank you, Lord, for the host, oh God, and the co-host, oh God. How they finding out Robbie, oh God, to assemble us together one more time, oh God, to give you praise and honor, oh God. We ask a special blessing for Sister Tate, oh God. Heal her from the crown of her head to the soles of her feet, oh God. Along with Gail Lake, oh God. Heal her from the crown of her head to the soles of her feet, oh God. In the name of Jesus, you are Jehovah Rapha, the Lord that healeth, oh God. We don't put nothing before you, oh God. We know nothing. It's too hard for you, oh God. We ask, oh God, that you restore them, oh God. In the name of Jesus, renew them and revive them again, oh God. In the name of Jesus, we ask, oh God, that you touch each and every one on this Bible study line, oh God. In the name of Jesus, bless the ones on their way, oh God. Give them traveling mercies where they have to go, oh God, if they have to move around, oh God. In the name of Jesus, bless them on their jobs, oh God. Touch Brother Linden right now, oh God. Strengthen him, oh God. Strengthen Brother Scott, oh God. In the name of Jesus, do it for your glory, Lord. Bless our families, oh Lord. Keep them covered under the blood of Jesus. No weapon formed against us shall prosper. Give us a good Bible study, oh God. We're learning your word, oh God. We're learning all about you, oh God. Help us build a relationship with you, oh God. In the name of Jesus, do it for your glory, Lord. And we give you all the glory, honor, and praises in Jesus' precious name we pray. Amen.
And amen. Thank you, Sister Gail. All right. Okay, beloved, once again, we're going to welcome you to tonight's study of the book of Numbers. I'm finding it to be quite a phenomenal book. It's revealing to me some things, yet different facets and characters of God and his nature. And we're just getting a greater understanding of him. And the more, there's a saying, the more you love me, the more you know me, the more you love me. I think that's how that saying goes. But that definitely has excellent application here because the more that we get to know our heavenly Father, I tell you the truth, the more we do nothing less than to love him. Beloved, Psalms 146 verse 4 reads as follows. When his breath departs, he returns to his earth. On that very day, his plans perish. Beloved, Psalms 146 helps us to appreciate that at the time of our demise, our thoughts, our plans, our passions, our desires, our actions, the things that we see, basically, all that we will do will come to a screeching halt. It will end. Beloved, with that in mind, I'm asking that you will please make your decision now to have Jesus Christ as your Lord and Savior. Because everything else will no longer be these great buildings and monuments that we are fascinated by. And they are beautiful. As I was coming in on my train, I was able to look at LaGuardia. The other building up. They do look beautiful. And God has no problem with us enjoying the beauty of these things. Going to the movies, games, baseball games, to the amusement parks, going on trips, camping, great adventures, visiting other places, Italy, France, Florida, Disney World. God has no problem with us enjoying these things. We know that our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, he wonderfully attended a wedding. But when we make these things our end all, when we say, this is all that I'm living for, then that's when the problem comes in. So again, beloved, I'm asking that these studies are shaping you and I to put our faith in our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, because once again, everything else that we know, see, and feel, and hear, and engage agent will come towards. Now, just briefly in recapping Numbers chapter 27, upon the preparation of Moses' exodus, listen to what God says to Moses as he's preparing to come to his end. We're taking a look at Numbers chapter 27, verse 12. And the Lord said unto Moses, Get thee up into this mount of Birham, and see the land which I have given unto the children of Israel. And when you have seen it, you shall also be gathered unto your people, as Aaron, your brother, was gathered. For you rebelled against my commandment in the desert of Zin, in the strife of the congregation, to sanctify me at the water before their eyes, that is, the water of Meribah and Kadesh, in the wilderness of Zin. So God is basically telling Moses that he will soon come to his demise. Beloved, when we come to the wonderful book of Deuteronomy, and I anticipate us being able to embark upon that journey next year, toward the middle of next year, the end of it, the latest, the beginning of the following year, we will come to see Moses actually come to his demise. So God is informing Moses that he will be coming to his end soon. And with that in mind, listen to what Moses beautifully requests of God, starting in Numbers chapter 27, verse 15. And the Lord spoke unto Moses, saying, Let the Lord, the God of the spirits of all flesh, set a man over the congregation. Now, this is Moses' request that God raise up a faithful man to lead God's people in Moses' place. Now, the reason why I find that so beautiful is because according to the natural order of things, I one day, I'm speaking about myself, I one day will be checking out prior to my children. So with that in mind, I also desire that God raise up all four of my children to carry on the giving out of his truth, his word. One evening, my wife, my children, my mother and I, we were preparing for prayer and Bible reading. Obviously, it was during my lunch break, but my lunch break was all of a sudden cut short. So I said, man, guys, I won't be able to study with y'all tonight because my lunch break is terminated. So my mother said, let your son Kendall, that's my oldest, she said, let your son Kendall handle it. He's quite capable. And you know what? I've come to find out that my son Kendall did a marvelous job of carrying on Bible reading and prayer with my, again, wife, children, and my mom. God bless you, son. God bless you so, my beautiful son. So beloved, with that in mind, are you and I taking the admonition of Solomon to train up a child in the way he should go? Are we, beloved, are we laying the foundation, the blueprint, as it were, for our children to take over and be stewards of our Father's word? Let me just say this really quick. Me being in this endeavor of this Bible study, as Linden and I are teachers of this, I got this from my mom. I remember being a little kid living in Brooklyn, and my mom would gather my brothers and my sisters and I around the table. And she would just read Bible to us and just explain it to us. Beloved, if you want to know where I got my, I got it from my mother. So once again, Numbers chapter 27, Moses, a thing when he asks God to raise up a man that he should replace Moses. Now, God told Moses in verses 18 and 19 of Numbers chapter 27, God told Moses to elect Joshua. Now, this appointment of election was done before the whole congregation, that Joshua was to be recognized and accepted as Israel's new man, chosen by God to be their leader. Now, this order of Joshua being elected before all the congregation is phenomenal. Why so? Because it shows all of Israel that this is God's undisputed election of Joshua. Kind of like the way God had to do in chapter 17, when he showed all those who murmured against Moses that Moses and Aaron were God's men. And God did this before public view. To get an understanding of that, we just had the recent election of the newly appointed president. And this was done public. It wasn't done in a closet somewhere, and it wasn't done in secrecy. It was done actually on American television, but it pretty much was viewed worldwide. And when Trump is inaugurated in January, again, it will be viewed worldwide. So again, I find that when Scripture says, God did this with Joshua before the whole congregation, that's God's way of showing the congregation that Joshua is God's choice. Beloved, God did that same thing concerning his son, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. That was a worldwide declaration that Jesus is being installed as God's king over the entire universe, over the earth, over you and I. And beloved, this was pretty much done at the dawning of man. Well, let me stop. Let me correct myself. This was actually done before man's creation. Beloved, turn in your Bibles, please, Revelation chapter 13, verse 8. And listen to these beautiful words of God calling his son, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, the Savior of the world, the King, master, if I may be allowed to, master of the universe. Listen to Revelation chapter 13, verse 8. And all that dwell upon the earth shall worship him. Now, this is speaking of worshiping the beasts. This is speaking of, if you go to Revelation chapter 13, verses 1 through 7, this gives you a brief picture of the beast that will be raised up and empowered by Satan. So verse 8 starts out by saying, and all that dwell upon the earth shall worship him. Once again, this is the beast that is engineered and empowered by Satan. This is not speaking of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Verse 8 again, and all that dwell upon the earth shall worship the beast whose names are not written in the book of life of the lamb slain from the foundation of the world. So again, beloved, Jesus was our Savior before Adam and Eve was created, before the blueprints of the earth was each set in motion. So again, this isn't something that's done in a closet. This isn't something that's done in secrecy. This isn't something for only an elect few to know about. John chapter 3, verse 16, one of the most famous scriptures in the entire world. For God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, that whosoever believeeth in him should not perish, but shall have everlasting life. So once again, as King Charles was installed as the next king, and this was made public, as Donald Trump won the election, that was made public, and his inauguration in January will be made public, God let the whole world know that Jesus Christ is his king, that he set upon his holy hill of Zion, Psalm chapter 2, verse 6. And listen to this public announcement first made in Genesis chapter 3, verse 15. This is God speaking. And I will put enmity between thee and the woman, that is, between Satan and the woman. Now, the woman is Israel. And between thy seed and her seed, it, this is speaking of Jesus, shall bruise thy head, and thou shall bruise his hill. So once again, we're starting as early as Genesis chapter 3, verse 15, of learning about this installation of God's king, the Lord Jesus Christ. Isaiah chapter 9, verses 6 and 7 helps us to appreciate that, listen to this. Isaiah chapter 9, verses 6 and 7 reads as follows. And this gives us an awesome picture that whoever would read would come to know who's God's ruler, king, and governor over this entire universe. Isaiah chapter 9, verses 6 and 7 reads as follows. For unto us a child is born, unto us a son is given. The government shall be upon his shoulder. His name shall be called Wonderful, excuse me, Wonderful Counselor, the mighty God, the everlasting Father, the prince of peace. The increase of his government and in peace, there shall be no end. Upon the throne of David and upon his kingdom to order it and to establish it with judgment and with justice, from henceforth even forever, the zeal of the Lord of hosts will perform this. So again, beloved, this is made public that Jesus Christ is God's installed king. Beloved, no matter who's in charge now, who's ruling what. Back in the days of Joseph, we had Pharaoh. As we moved down throughout the history of time, we had different kings and monarchs. We come to United States of America, we have presidents. In England, they have King Charles, they have a parliament. And throughout the world, they have different other factions and governments who rules the people. Well, listen to what Ezekiel, chapter 21, verse 27, says. Ezekiel chapter 21, verse 27 reads as follows. And this is God speaking. Let's start at verse 26. Thus saith the Lord God, remove the diadem and take off the crown, just envision King Charles' crown. Thus saith the Lord, remove the diadem and take off the crown. This shall not be the same. Exalt him that is low, that is our Lord Jesus Christ, and abate him that is high. In other words, bring low those that are high. Once again, King Charles, Donald Trump, and any other monarchs on this earth. Verse 27, I will overturn, overturn, overturn it, and it shall be no more until he come, whose right it is, and I will give it him. This is God speaking, that his son, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, will subvert, will destroy, will bring to nought all authorities and all government officials on this planet. Once again, beloved, this is God's choice. So God made the choice to put Joshua in effect after Moses' departure. And Joshua, as we come to see in Numbers chapter 11, verses 27 through 29, he had a real resolve or love or fervor for the things of God. His resolve was, only men chosen by God should be responsible for prophesying. Joshua did not know that God's spirit had rested upon me, dad, and eldad. Beloved, it is of super importance that you are led by a man of God because anyone else will mislead you. So a person might say, okay, Brother Scott, fine, dandy, your advice, we'll take it. But how will we know the man from God from others? Simple, beloved, you compare him diligently to Scripture. Listen to me. You compare whomever is your teacher diligently to Scripture. You line them up and see if he completely, I'm not talking about he has 99.9% of it right. He has to have all of it right. As we're going to get into tonight, Numbers chapter 28 and 29, we're going to see that God has specific days, times set for people to carry on their offerings. He had measurements, a tenth of an ephah, a hen of oil. He had specific numbers, one lamb for the evening, another lamb for the day, seven lambs, certain number amount of bullocks. God was specific. Remember, God told Naaman, who had leprosy, to go and dip himself seven times in the Jordan River. Now, let's just examine that for one quick second. What if Naaman in a huff would have said, okay, I'll do it? So he dipped himself, one, two, three, are you kidding me? Four, this is ridiculous. Five, I don't see any change in my flesh. Six, no, no, no. Six is it. Would Naaman have been healed of his leprosy? The answer to that is no, because God said seven, and seven alone. So if Naaman would have said, like we used to do, we used to play a game and we used to punch each other. And one punch did, one punch did it. We used to punch the person again, say, this punch is for good luck. So let's say Naaman adopted that attitude. He did one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and one for good measure, eight. Would he have been healed of his leprosy? The answer to that is no. God said seven. So beloved, we have to understand that what God says goes. If he says the righteous will inherit his kingdom, please understand that in his kingdom, you will not find any, no matter where you search in this universe. So what does that say to you and I, Brother Scott? That says to you and I that we have to do things God's way in order to get it to his kingdom. John chapter 14, verse 6. I am the way, not Mohammed, not Buddha, not Confucius, not Zen, not you. Jesus says, I am the way, the truth, and the life. No man, and from Adam and Eve down to this good day, everything that come unto this earth from the womb of a woman and the seed of a man is a man. And what I mean, I'm saying man in a generic term to describe the human race. Jesus says, no man comes unto the Father but by me. I don't believe it. I don't accept it. And you can do away with that nonsense, Scott. I'm going to get into heaven on my terms. No man comes unto the Father but by me. That is a public declaration. You can do with it what you want, and you can live anywhere you want. But when it comes to the day of judgment, if Jesus Christ was not your Lord and Savior, you will see then how true those words are. I'm taking a chance, and I'm going to believe what Jesus says, that no man comes unto the Father but by me. I'm betting not only my life on it, I'm betting my family's life on it. My wife and my children are God's keep. From them to me, they are my charge. So I'm betting my, as well as their eternity, on believing on the Lord Jesus Christ, that I may have life and have it more abundantly. Numbers, the review of Numbers chapter 28, starting at verse 1. And I'm just going to do the reading just to give us a background of what we are in for as far as a treat this evening. Numbers chapter 21, I'm sorry, Numbers chapter 28, please forgive me. Numbers chapter 28, starting at verse 1. And the Lord spoke unto Moses, saying, Command the children of Israel, and say unto them, My offering and my bread, for my sacrifices made by fire. Beloved, please keep in mind who's speaking here. This is God. And listen to what he's saying. He's saying, my offering, my bread, my sacrifices, made by fire, for a sweet savor unto me. Shall you observe to offer unto me in their due season, and thou so say unto them, This is the offering made by fire, which ye shall offer unto the Lord, two lambs of the first year without spot, day by day, for a continual burnt offering. The one lamb shalt thou offer in the morning; the other lamb shalt thou offer at evening; and a tenth part of an ephah of flour for a meat offering, mangled with the fourth part of a hen of beaten oil. It is a continual burnt offering, which was ordained in Mount Sinai for a sweet savor, a sacrifice made by fire unto the Lord. Verse 7. And the drink offering thereof shall be the fourth part of a hen for the one lamb. In the holy place shalt thou cause a strong wine to be poured unto the Lord for a drink offering. And the other lamb shalt thou offer at evening, as the meat offering of the morning, and at the drink offering thereof, thou shalt offer it, a sacrifice made by fire of a sweet savor unto the Lord. And on the Sabbath the day, two lambs of the first year without spot, and two-tenth deal of flour for a meat offering, mangled with oil and a drink offering thereof. This is the burnt offering of every Sabbath, beside the continual burnt offering and this drink offering. And in the beginnings of your months, ye shall offer a burnt offering unto the Lord, two young bullocks, one ram, seven lambs of the first year without spot. And we'll break off our reading right there. Okay, so beloved, let's get a mindset of what God is speaking on. Beloved, these offerings are very detailed and very ornate, which again, points to and shows a sacrifice that was our Lord. Remember, God said, my offerings and my bread. Beloved of a truth, as a Christian, as a Christian, at the very minimum, daily, daily, beloved, please get into your thinking that every day you and I are Christians, we are to be engaged in offering. Now, I'm not talking about this mosaic sacrifice that we're reading about here in Numbers. No. Because we're no longer under that mosaic contract. We're no longer under that mosaic condition. And let me just share this with you. Even the Jew America, and I could comfortably say, not throughout the world, that are doing these sacrifices, these lambs, the bullocks, so on and so forth. I don't know exactly what they are doing, but I can almost be sure to say that they're not doing this because I live in a well, I'm on the border. Where I live is on the border of a predominantly Jewish neighborhood. Now, they do, and I'm going to get into that, they do practice some of the Now they do, and I'm going to get into that, they do practice some of the rituals, if I'm maybe allowed to say. They still practice the festival of booze. They still practice Purim, which was the day that Esther, as, as installed queen, saved the children of Israel from the, the, the onslaught of Haman. They still practice that. They still practice Passover. They still practice Hanukkah. So they still have a part. They still practice some of their traditional practices as found here in the scriptures. Passover is one of the oldest celebrations as far as religious celebrations on the, in the world today. And Passover dates back to Exodus. And yes, the children of Israel, they are celebrating Passover. Now again, like I said, I live in the, I, I live in the predominantly Jewish neighborhood. And during Passover, I do not see blood on any of their doorposts. So again, beloved, the rituals that we're reading about that the children of Israel are engaged in, today they're not practicing it. And even if they were, listen to me. Even if they were practicing, it would be of no use or no value to God whatsoever, because all of that pointed to our Lord Jesus Christ. Again, let me illustrate. In the days of, in the days, and I'm, I'm, I'm just going to use this. Polar pictures and taking pictures to the photo shop to have them developed. I would take a picture of my girlfriend. And in her absence, I would look at the picture and say, oh, you're lovely. I wish you were here and blah, 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 yada, yada, yada. That picture serves as a substitute for the real deal. Because when we would go out on the weekend or I would go see her, you better believe I would not walk up to her, take out the picture, hold it in front of her. I think I prefer the picture instead of you. That's ludicrous. That's nonsense. That's foolishness. So once again, beloved, these things that we're reading of, starting in Exodus, Leviticus, and now in Numbers, these are all types that will point into our Lord Jesus Christ. So our Lord's sacrifice during his tenure on earth had abolished all of this. And just, just to give you a quick heads up, all this that they're doing with the sacrificing of these animals and the multiple bloodshed and, 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 and just the multitude of the animals that was, that died, they did not take away sin. It was just a covering. It was just a covering. Jesus has shed blood on Calvary's cross, actually removes sin. So a person might say, well, wait a minute, brother Scott. So you're saying to me that all of these things were done in vain? The answer to that is absolutely not. Remember, scripture says Abraham believed God and it was counted to him for what? For righteousness sake. So the pre-New Testament saints, the pre-New Testament saints, everything they did was out of faith. Again, let me illustrate. When you take out your American Express, your Discover card, your Visa, your MasterCard, you use that to go make a purchase. Now that, that, you, you're not using actual cash, you're using that as a purchase. So in other words, that's showing the, the merchant that you're good for that product. So they'll give you the, they'll give you the product, let's just say a car, they'll give you the car. And then you have to settle that between you and American Express. But with that card, you are able to lock, stock, and barrel, get the car. And if you have enough on your American Express, let's say ninety thousand dollars you got on your American Express to pay for a sixty thousand dollar car, that sixty thousand dollar car is yours, lock, stock, and barrel. That card pointed to you having the financial means to be able to purchase that vehicle. So the things that were done here in Old Testament that pointed to our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ and in good faith, because those who practiced these things or carried out these ordinances, they showed God that they believed what God said goes. When we get to Matthew, when our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, Galatians, chapter four, verse four says, when the fullness of time was come, God sent forth his son made of a woman, born under the law to free us from the law. When our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ was born, lived, and died on Calvary's cross, that did away with the bulls, the lambs, the sheep, the goat, the flour, the hen of oil, all of that. His sacrifice brought it in to all of those transactions. So again, beloved, these only pointed to our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. But you better believe that they had to be done exactly as God prescribed. Now, you and I as a Christian, we have to do business with Jesus Christ, not on Sunday, not during Easter, and not at Christmas or Thanksgiving. We have to do business with Jesus every single day. Beloved, listen to Numbers, chapter twenty eight, verse four. The one lamb shalt thou offer in the morning, and the other lamb shalt thou offer at evening. Beloved, that puts in mind to me, what I do, well, let me, let me rephrase that. What my family and I do is we have morning prayer and we have evening prayer. You see, that is parallel to what God is telling the children of Israel to sacrifice a lamb in the morning and sacrifice a lamb in the evening. And I'm talking about literal lambs. Literal lambs. Now, our sacrifice is to our lamb, God's lamb, is when we do prayer, Bible reading, study. Brother Scott, wait a minute, bro. That's overkill. I'm not gonna do this thing every day. You, you, you better be lucky. I, I, I do it once a week, Sunday. Well, luck has nothing to do with this. But your salvation and your relationship with the Lord Jesus Christ has everything to do with this. Beloved, um, ju- just real quick. There was a song by Babyface, and the song went like this. Um, I hope I can hit that note right. I only think of you on two occasions, that's day and night. I go for broke if I could be with you. Now, the, 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 how would I say? The, the main theme of that song is that Babyface thinks about his girl on two occasions, that's day and night. That's the thought that God is helping us to understand here, that day and night we are to be engaged with our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Like I told you, brother Lyndon and I, in preparation for Saturday studies, we spend literally, literally seven days a week getting these studies ready. Also beloved, we send y'all texts. Brother Lyndon will send you scriptures from tonight's meal. And this takes every day, Monday, Sunday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Every day of the week, we're engaged in, 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 in the transaction with the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Beloved, it is not too much to ask that you, as a Christian, be engaged with a transaction with your Father daily. Beloved, those of us who have full-time jobs, don't our employer require a minimum of forty hours a week? So let's, let's say we start at nine in the morning, right? And we finish work at five in the evening. Isn't that the same application of devoting yourself to your employer day and night? Sure it is. Cause like I said, if you start at nine in the morning, your job doesn't finish until eight, uh, uh, five in the evening. And yes, there are some that even work to eight. There were some that worked not just five days a week. There were some that worked seven days a week. I was just teasing one of my supervisors. And I was, when I came in this morning, um, there's some, when I came in this morning at eleven, and I finished work at eight this evening, she was still there. Now, when I came in, she was there. When I'm leaving, she's still there. So wouldn't it put you in the mindset that she's sacrificing quote unquote, or making a devotion to her employer day and night? Beloved, I say this as comparison. I'm not saying this in a complimentary tone. Jews and Muslims, yes, let me just, there's an old saying, they say, give the devil his due. Jews and Muslims honestly shame the average Christian. And I'm saying this lovingly. And the reason why I say that is because we are supposed to take note of such things and we're supposed to do something about it. Now remember, please remember, please keep in mind what I'm getting ready to say to you. Christians only, O-N-L-Y. Christians are the only, if you may, if, if you want to use the term religion, or religious people, Christians are the only ones on earth who have a right or the right to have a relationship with the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. The Jew who are God's chosen people, they don't even have a relationship with God. Brother Scott, aren't we reading about the Jews having a relationship with God here in Numbers, and Leviticus, and Exodus, and Judea, and Rhetory? Yes, we are. Yes, we are. But there was a time when once in Galatians, chapter four, verse four, when Jesus come upon the earth, that transaction between the Jews and Jehovah was broken. Because no man comes unto the Father except through our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. So even Jews, the Jews that you see going to temple faithfully, carrying the Torah under their hands, and doing all of these religious transactions, they're not, they're nothing to God. And let's not even start with Muslims. They don't have God because they don't, well, both Jew and, and Muslims, well, at least the Muslim, uh, Jews know a little something about Jesus Christ. They refuse to accept him. But the Muslims have no, no transaction with God whatsoever. Because remember, no man comes unto the Father but by me. So again, beloved, Christians are the only ones on this planet, that are only ones on this planet that have a relationship with the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. And yet, under the beautiful commandment given Moses by God, we refuse to day and night have a transaction with God. And that's, 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 that's horrible. That's, that, that's a shame. Because look at what he did and look at what he's doing for us. Everyone here on tonight's study, and for the most part throughout the world, we have a measure of good health. We have a measure of, of some finances. We're doing, we're, we're, we're doing well. We learned last week that where did this power to get wealth come from? It comes from God. So beloved, you and I as God's children, we are God's children through faith in Jesus Christ. We complain about having a relationship with God every day. And then you wanna multiply that complaint by saying, you want me to do this day and night? Are you kidding me, brother Scott? Away with you. No. No, we're supposed to do this day and night. And what is scripture say? Continually. Continually, we're supposed to do this. Because God has given to us his offering, his bread. Listen to it beautifully. Beautifully described here. Listen to this concerning our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Again, God says, my offering. That's distinctly of Jesus Christ, God's sacrificial lamb. John, chapter one, verse twenty nine. The next day John see of Jesus coming unto him and say, behold, the lamb of God which taketh away the sin of the world. When God says, my bread, listen again, God says, my bread, he's speaking of who? His Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, because that's a perfect description of him in the flesh. And do not forget what our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ himself said. I am that true bread of God from heaven. Listen to John, chapter six, verses thirty-two through thirty-five. John, chapter six, verses thirty-two through thirty-five. Once again, beloved, if you're taking notes of this with your pens and pencils, beautiful. Again, brother Lyndon will send you scriptures. And again, you have the option of listening to these studies on Lyndon's YouTube channel, Lyndon Mason. John, chapter six, verses thirty-two through thirty-five. Then Jesus said unto them, truly I say unto you, Moses gave you not that bread from heaven, but my Father giveth you the true bread from heaven. For the bread of God is he which cometh down from heaven and giveth life unto the world. Beloved, hold your place in John, chapter six, verse thirty-two, if you're able to. And then move back quickly to Numbers, chapter twenty-eight, verse two. Listen to this beautiful, beautiful comparison. Listen to this excellent parable. Command the children of Israel and say unto them, my offering, this is God's offering, my offering and my bread. My bread. Beloved, you wanna talk about beauty in motion? You wanna talk about beauty in motion? Listen to what, listen, listen to what God is saying. My bread. This is God calling who? His bread, his son, our Savior, Jesus Christ. Now, move right back to John, chapter six, verse thirty-two. Then Jesus said unto them, truly I say unto you, Moses gave you not that bread from heaven, but my Father giveth you the true bread from heaven. Beloved, when I have these studies, when I have this engagement, when I, when, 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 when I have this involvement with God, it's as if I died a thousand times. Because God is just, he's just, he's just too beautiful. He is just too beautiful. I, I don't even know what else to say outside of that. Our God is awesome, and I love him. Beloved, if we, if we find, I, I, I noticed was back, you know, back in the day, we, whenever we discovered a, a, a new restaurant or something, hey, man, a beef steak charlie is, is the jam. You know, we should go there and have dinner. They, they have, you know, excellent dinner and all this and so on and so forth. Or man, I found this beautiful jam. I was listening to Jam Master J and, um, um, LL, um, LL, Run DMC, yo, you need to check out their jam. So what I'm saying in that connection is when you come upon something beautiful or something lovely, you wanna share it with others. Am I right? Well, beloved, we have come upon this beautiful God and Father of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. And Lyndon and I, we spent our entire week gathering our notes so that we could share him with you as well. Beloved, please taste and see that the Lord is good, because I guarantee, listen, I guarantee, please listen to me very carefully. I guarantee that you will fall in love with the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. And I am so confident in that, that I'm putting my soul on that table to guarantee you. Brother Scott, I got you, because I don't like God, and I don't like Jesus Christ, and I don't like the Holy Spirit. That's to your disadvantage. But if you really, you know, ever since we got into these studies, my love for God multiplied. It went from zero to a hundred so fast, I didn't even see the speedometer spin. Trust you me, if you spend daily, beloved, in the mornings, my wife takes me to work. Okay, now listen to the transaction I'm about to tell you. We live together, we sleep together, of course, husband and wife. My wife takes me to work. Once I get to work and I'm settled, I'm calling back on the phone, who? My wife and children. That's the picture that I'm trying to get y'all to. My wife and children. That's the picture that I'm trying to get y'all to appreciate. That every day I'm engaging with my family physically and electronically. And I say electronically, you know, when I call them on the phone or video chat and so on and so forth. I've been doing this with my wife for some twenty-plus years and all, and, and all give thanks unto the Lord for He is so good. And to this good day, I'm not tired of engaging with my wife and my four beautiful children. Beloved, please do not, please do not tire of your engagement with the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Yes, you as a Christian today make this your resolve to say, I'm going to engage with the Father every day. Not Sunday only, or even this Bible study every Saturday only, or not during Easter or Christmas or praying the New Year in, no. Visit God every day. And as we read on the Sabbath, you doubled your offering. Beloved, when you come to Bible study, when you come to Bible study on Saturday night, so when you go to church on Sunday, you should have already had an awesome transaction with God. And when you get to Sunday or when you get to this Bible study, you should just be doubling. What, what, what does Smokey say? I double that emotion. So beloved, please, please make it your business to involve yourself with the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit daily. And I'm not being facetious when I'm saying this, and I'm not using this as a, as a, as a form of saying or as a um, as a simile. I mean this literally. Do a transaction with the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit every day. Brother Scott, I don't know how to pray. Say, Father, thank you for waking me up. Thank you for my wife. Thank you for my husband. Thank you for my son. Thank you for my daughter. Thank you for my children. Thank you for my job. And let me slip this in there. Thank you for even the discipline. The summer before my mother um made her transaction, uh, her, her transition, I said, Ma, thank you for tearing me up. And I meant every word of it. Thank you, Ma, for disciplining me. You even thank God for the discipline that He brings in your life. Because remember, Scripture says, God disciplines those He loves. My mother wailed my behind because she loved Scott Kendall Foster. And I blessed that woman for it. So you bless the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit for His gifts of mercy. You thank Him for His Son. And yes, you thank Him for His reign as well. In other words, you thank Him for the blessings that He gives you, that million dollars. And thank you for the bills that He gives you along with that million dollars. And I'm being as sincere and as serious as I can be. Because, you know, they say, measure your journey in life like by that five-year, ten-year, twenty-year period. Beloved, five to seven years ago, I wasn't like this. I was awful. Yeah, I was. My thinking was just, just tore up from the floor. I just wasn't right at all. Why? Because I did not appreciate the discipline that my father was putting on me. Now I bless him. My older brother says to me one day, he says, Scott, how do you view the Holy Spirit? I said, I view the Holy Spirit as a disciplinarian. My brother was shocked. Now, he's four years my senior. He said, yo, bro, I never heard anyone's put that kind of um blessings on the Holy Spirit. I said, yeah, I view the Holy Spirit as my disciplinarian. Because I'm a knucklehead. And God had to straighten me out. So beloved, please bless the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit for the good that you receive and bless Him also for the bad that you receive. My baby allowed to use such a term. That pretty much covers twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Let me bring thirty and I'll bring it to a close and Brother Lyndon will bring in his portion. Beloved, and Brother Lyndon, well covered last week, vows. Listen to, please, listen to Matthew, chapter seven, I'm sorry, Matthew, chapter five, verse thirty-seven. Matthew, chapter five, verse thirty-seven, read this follows. Let your communication be yea, yea, nay, nay. For what, for whatsoever is more than these cometh from evil. Beloved, God's Word encourages us to be few in word. Robert, chapter ten, verse nineteen. But much in wisdom. Now, listen, if any of you, and I'm talking about right now at nine PM, if any of you lack wisdom, listen to James, chapter one, verse five. If any of you lack wisdom, let them ask of God that give it to all men freely and he does not upbrae. If you ask of God, it will be given to you. Beloved, just really quick, um, a note that I, I, I um had gone past and I would just like to incorporate it as, as um I'm bringing a conclusion to my review. Beloved, Jesus is the most beautiful person in this entire universe. And I regret, my heart is broken that because of me, again, beloved, I'm not talking about any of y'all here and I'm not even talking about anyone in the world. Because of my behavior, God had to sacrifice His Son, my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ on Calvary's cross. And dare I think that I can uh, uh, uh worm my way around Jesus Christ and get into God's kingdom? Beloved, let me tell you something. When God looks at me, if he doesn't see Jesus, I'm doomed. If God looks at me without Jesus, I'm finished. Let me illustrate what I mean by that. Beloved, when I wake up in the morning, and I was sharing this with my coworker, when I wake up in the morning without my glasses, everything is a blur. Listen to me. My vision, my vision is, yes, that challenge. Without my glasses, that which is in front of my face, my head, and that which is across the room is a blur. Beloved, when I put on my glasses, I can see clearly now on my glasses on, yes. Yes, yes, yes. Everything is picture perfect. And I mean, sharp as a double-edged sword. So beloved, when God looks at you and I without the glasses of Jesus, we are a blur. And what do we want to do with a blur? We want to dismiss it. So beloved, please, please beg God to see you through Jesus Christ. And the only way he can see you through Jesus Christ is if you become a servant of the Savior. I just wanted to incorporate that really quick. Once again, back in thirty, make careful on making vows. God takes the making of a vow very serious. Listen to Deuteronomy, chapter twenty-three, verses twenty-one through twenty-three. When you make a vow unto the Lord your God, do not slack or rather hesitate to pay for it. For the Lord thy God will surely require it of thee, and it would be a sin to you. But if you do not want to vow, it won't be a sin. In other words, if you say, okay, God, instead of saying, okay, if you say, Heavenly Father, I promise you, I won't do this again. I vow to you, I won't do it again. If you want to say, you know what? I've been kind of shaky and sketchy and edgy on these vows. God, I won't do it again. Don't say promise, just say, Father, I won't do it again. That's what the Scripture means by, if you for, if you shall forbear to vow. It won't be a sin if you say, God, I won't do it again. Because you once have vowed and you don't pay it, that's a sin. Verse twenty-three of Numbers, chapter, I'm sorry, of Deuteronomy, chapter twenty-three. Deuteronomy, chapter twenty-three, verse twenty-three. That which is gone of thy lips shall you keep and perform, even a free will offering according as you have vowed unto the Lord thy God, which you have promised with your mouth. Beloved, in the early days of the United States of America, there were no such things as collateral or um um even signatures to get a loan. Um, for the most part, you got a loan on a handshake and a promise to pay back. That's how it was in the early days of America. Now, we go for a loan, you gotta leave your social security number, a tra, a, a, a record of your bank um statements, your job, references, uh, how you stand it in the community. I mean, they're asking pretty much for blood nowadays. Beloved, why? Because people make promises that they do not pay back. Beloved, you make a vow, you pay your vow. Now, I want to say something. All y'all probably standing in line saying, well, Brother Scott, I'm standing in line as a guilty one of making vows and breaking it. Well, I'm jumping ahead of all y'all. I'm skipping the line. Because I made a vow and a vow and a vow and a vow and a vow to God. And I broke it. I broke it. I broke it. And I broke it. Beloved, I want to share something very intimate. I want to share something very intimate with y'all. And y'all gotta please forgive me. Please forgive me. I got so tired of my waywardness and my godlessness and my sins that I decided one day that I'm gonna keep him, oh, I'm gonna keep the three hundred of Charles. I got so sick and tired of making vows and promises to God and promising to do this and that I said, you know what? Enough is enough. Enough is enough. Beloved, um, back in two thousand twelve, um, I had a job. I lost that job. Hurricane Sandy had kicked my wife, my, my, my three little boys and myself out of our basement apartment. Um, where we went to stay, i- 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 it was a challenge. My wife had just given birth to my little daughter. We were pretty much um asked to leave. So here we are. I got three little children. I got a newborn baby. No job. So I went to go stay in a, we went to go stay in a shelter. While in the shelter, I said, enough is enough is enough. Beloved, I'm saying this that maybe it will bless someone who's in that same arena. We were in a shelter and I, and I'm a family of six. So our family was so large that they had to give us two apartments. So we all stayed in the one apartment. So one day, I can even tell you the day I remember it so vividly. I took a bottle of Clorox and I went into the other apartment. And I said, you know what, Father? That's it. I'm tired of making vows and promises and blah, blah, blah. I'm tired. I'm tired. I'm just tired. So I took a bottle of Clorox and I went into the other apartment. Everybody else was in the uh first apartment and I was in the other apartment by myself. Trying to get up the nerve to write my final check. Because I got tired of writing checks that my mouth, uh, letting my mouth write checks that my body couldn't catch. So while I'm in there trying to get up the nerve to nurse that bottle of Clorox as if I was drinking a glass of orange juice, just to, just to put it into it. And, 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 and I'm trying to be as real with y'all as possible. So as I'm trying to get up the nerve to go ahead and drink this Clorox, I hear a voice, Daddy? That was my little six-year-old Tyler. It scared the living daylights out of me because he was in that hallway by himself. I jumped up, I dropped that bottle of Clorox and I ran to him. He said, Daddy, what are you doing? I said, nothing, Daddy. Just over here thinking. I said, here, let's get back in the apartment. I was scared for him, you know, that he was going to be hurt in that hallways. You know, there's a saying, uh, and a child shall lead them. So I blessed my baby, well, he's, he's still my baby, but he was my baby then, my, my Tyler, for preventing him, actually, he was sent by the, by the, by the Holy Spirit to prevent his father from doing something that would have never gained me God's forgiveness. Now, the reason why I remember this so vividly because that day we had just learned on the loose that Robin Givens, I mean, Robin Williams had killed himself. And I was blown away. You know what I started saying? I started saying, Robin, why didn't you wait just one more day, brother? Just one more day and you could have been alive and you would have, you know, still be here and so on and so forth. And here I am chastising Robin Givens when just moments ago, I was getting ready to do, God forbid, the same thing. So beloved, what I'm saying to you is this. When you make a vow to God, pay it. If you don't think you're going to be strong enough to pay it, just say, Father, I won't do it. And please help me not to do it. Let your yes be, yes, Father, I'll do it. And let your no be, no, Father, I won't. That is to say, yes, Father, I will not sin. Or no, Father, I won't do it anymore. For his promises to us are yea and amen. So let not ours be to God, yes, and then no. Listen to Matthew, chapter twenty-one, verses twenty-eight through thirty. But what do you think? A certain man had two sons and he came to the first and said, son, go work today at my venue. And he answered and said, I will not. But afterward he repented and went. And he came to the second likewise and said, go. And he said, sir, I go. But he did not. Now that is sin. Beloved, bless the Father by letting your yes be your yes. Let your no be your no. Make no vows only if you were asked of Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit to help carry it through. Brother Lyndon.
Okay. To uh add on to that, it wasn't that drastic. I remember to encourage anybody. We testify about God's grace. It's what touched my heart to cry out to God when I heard the testimonies of others. Because everybody is under the impression, God, this God is not for me. It's probably for somebody who is uh devoted to going to church every Sunday or every Saturday. But um I can recall I was uh working as a security officer. And I just, uh, this bill started piling up. And after just being there for a few years, you know, we, we, we received a a threat from a landlord and he was going to evict us. And Maya, at the time, was not even a year old. And by, she's only we asked him to be patient with us and long story short, um, I had to make a choice one time. Uh, everybody, when I was driving around my Honda Accord, everybody was telling me, you know, your left, your left tire is peeling. And uh I couldn't make ends meet. So we had, we were being evicted. What should I do? Should I spend forty-five dollars for another tire? Or should I spend um that money towards grocery? Or should I spend, uh, that money towards groceries to feed my family? I chose to feed my family. Leave, one time I was sitting down and one of my coworkers, uh, Stephen Lopez. He was a member of the Journey Church and, uh, he said, hey, uh, my church is hosting a baptism. At Jones Beach. I was eavesdropping. I said, hey, you know, I, I would like to get baptized. And, uh, he told me the day was July twenty-six, two thousand eight. So then everybody was trying to console us and try to encourage us, hey, it's gonna be alright. You know, get your mind off things. And my sister-in-law, um, who was pregnant at the time said, hey, I have a. Have a time share in Atlantic City. Why don't you guys just get your minds off, uh, minds off of this dilemma? You're too stressed. And just, just relax. We're gonna, we're gonna have a good time. So, uh, of all days, I. It was like one of the hottest days in July. And as we were following them to, uh, New Jersey. On the turnpike. This tire, the same tire, I was contemplating about, stripped, it was so hot. It took out the left, um, headlight. And by the grace of God. Nobody hit us. We have no cell phones. I slowed down the car on the side. And it, it was crushing because Maya. Javon was riding with his aunt. And they, I, I, we were like, how are they gonna find out that we are stranded? I don't know. By the grace. We found a way to, uh, c- contact them. Somebody out on the, uh, New Jersey turnpike entering. And Sarah had Maya in her arms and, uh, someone was kind enough to. Let us use their cellphone to contact them and let her, let her know where we were located. Long story short. This is a week before the baptism. So at that time. We found, we made a way. I think Obama gave us, uh, stimulus checks. So we used most of that. To just get a spare tire. Couldn't fix the headlight. The headlight was out. It was that drastic. But we managed, we went to New, um, we went to, um, New Jersey. But, you know, uh. And, uh, we spent some time there and we came back. And here was a big challenge. I said, man. I don't think I'm gonna make it to Jones Beach with the car in this condition like this. There probably other baptisms I can attend. And just wrestling back and forth. I said, you know what? Let's go. And, uh, I decided to get baptized at Jones Beach. The following Saturday. And all of a sudden, things just started to fall in place. I. I asked around and someone said, hey, there's a new job opening. Safety director. You know. He's leaving. He's now gonna be the manager. He's still my manager until his day. And, uh, there's an opening if you want to apply. So I said, okay. I said, great, that's, uh, my mom was so flustered, but I got baptized. They gave, they, they told me about this opportunity. I took advantage of it. And then things started falling into place. And, uh, we used to stop by this hot dog stand and, and, uh, Sarah was comply, uh, contemplating on moving to the Bronx or. Somewhere else. And I said, no, it's not good for the kids. They're Greek. And, uh, his name is Tommy. I don't know if he's a. But, uh, he said, it's not good for your kids. And then his mu- his wife said, hey, I know my cousin who's a landlord. And he has a place on Coolers Avenue. You wanna check it out? Say, yeah. Before that, we were homeless. And, uh, when I got hired, I was homeless. I was knocked on the, oh, you know, this, we can't have the, you know, it's too much. Yeah, yeah, you, you know, we have, uh, we don't have enough space. And my other sister-in-law was kind enough to take us in, you know, in Harlem. It felt like it was the longest three weeks. I had to study. If I didn't pass these onsite tests, if I didn't pass these tests at all, I, I, I was, I was gonna be fired. So that was the, the agreement. And, uh. Man, uh. We finally, uh. Yeah, then, we stayed. My si- my wife's, um, cousin. Uh, he, he, he's a landlord, Coolers Avenue. Why don't you check it out? So one bedroom. And, uh. And doors. We, we moved in. I said, that's the grace of God. I said, wow. All days. One time, uh, my wife was. And, uh, she received something in a mail from the Journey Church. And the Journey Church had this DVD of my baptism. I still have it. And she was just, was just, this is God, you know, got the job. Got an apartment on God's timing. And then when I look back, I said, you know what? This wasn't revealed to me at that time, but the devil tried to take us out, man. He probably, he tried to discourage me from getting baptized. And so then I'm like, wow, this is a journey. This is a journey. And there are many other testimonies I can tell you about, but I just want you to know, that's all about God. Yes, you are, Yahweh. And when you see that he has this merciful plan for you. Your, your lives are already written. I'm, I'm gonna tell you straight up, your lives are recorded. It's already written. And whatever he perceives, and whatever you see, uh, and reaching out. To say, this is my son. And you don't deserve it. There's no room for boasting. But out of grace, um, I saw his plans opening up and. Well, I met up with Scott. He was our mailman, that Coolers Avenue. And, uh. I remember talking to him and he was on his route. We would have conversations about God. And he'll tell me about his testimony. So, you know, God always orchestrates and puts you in the right positions. And, uh, I thank him every day. I really thank him every day. And I do encourage everybody, you know, when, when the time is right, you know, we, we're not gonna just, uh, quote scriptures and, uh. You know, uh, make connections and, and compare scripture to scripture. I would definitely love for everybody to. The heart to share their testimony. You understand how much of an encouragement it can be to people who are just in dire need or desperate. They don't understand. But it also helps us who are in the faith. It encourages us. It shows us how beautiful it is. So that was, uh, a touching testimony from Scott. You gotta tell people. Because I know people have a false pers- perception of a follower of Christ. We, we are messed up. And we are bought at a high price. But in this process, he is purging us. He's testing us. He's. Purging us. He's bringing us from glory to glory. You see, when we read these. We come to the conclusion that when we receive the mercy of God, we realize we are in dire need. Happiness. We're not looking for a quick fix. We're not trying to, you know. God is a genie. Get me out of this situation and get me out of that and, and get me out of this. And then I'll serve you. No, we say, hey, God. Our deeds brought us to this predicament. And you know what? My God, have, have mercy on me. I have a sin. Okay. Numbers thirty-one. Israelites were taking the journey through the wilderness. As you can see, they've had numerous challenges. Some complained and murmured. Y'all to understand that even though we face circumstances. You know, we really mock, mock them. Wasn't for God's grace, we would have been murmuring and complaining also. But as, uh, a lesson to all of us, we realize. From the book of Job, I learned this even before. So walking with God, I knew that Job taught me that. Whatever the circumstances are, just don't. God. These stories are telling me, trust God's deliverance. If he brought you this far. I, I can't see how his plans will fail. I have confidence in him. I'm gonna be like a little child. I'm, I'm going to just continue. To do what he commanded me to do. I know I had other ventures. I know I had other plans. I had other aspirations. Of being a musician. But God says, no. This is what you're going to do. Alright, let's, let's go to numbers thirty-one. Numbers thirty-one. Where are you? Okay. The Lord said to Moses, take vengeance on the Midianites for the Israelites. After that, you will be gathered to your people. So Moses said to the people, arm some of your men to go to war against the Midianites so that they may carry out the Lord's vengeance on them. Send them to battle a thousand men from each of Israel. So twelve armed for battle, a thousand from each tribe were supplied from the clans of Israel. Moses sent them into battle, a thousand from each tribe along with. Son of Eliezer, the priest, who took with him articles from the sanctuary. And the trumpets are for sig. They fought against Midian as the Lord commanded Moses and killed every man. Among their victims were. Evai. Rekham, Zor, Her, and Reba, kings of Midian. They also killed Balaam, son of Beor, with a sword. The Israelites captured the Midianite women and children and took the Midianite herds, flocks and goods as plunder. They burned all the towns where the Midianites had settled, as well as their camp, all their camps. They took all the plunder and spoils, including the people and animals, and brought the captive spoils and plunder. To Moses and Eliezer, the priest and the Israelite assembly at their camp on the plains of Moab. By the Jordan across from Jericho. Moses, Eliezer, the priests, and all the leaders of the community went to meet them outside the camp. Moses was angry with the officers of the army, the commanders of the thousands, and commanders of hundreds who were to battle. Have you allowed all the women to live? They were the ones who followed Balaam's advice and enticed the Israelites to be unfaithful to the Lord. In the pure incident. So we see why God put Balaam to the sword. Enticed the Israelites to sleep with the Mi- Midianite woman. You see, there were plagues. They suffered many plagues. And it took the bravery of a man. To put his spear through an Israelite and a Midianite Cosby. So Balaam, now, Balaam was put to the sword. Now kill all the boys and kill everyone that slept with a man. But save for yourselves every girl who has never slept with a man. Anyone who has killed someone or touched someone who was killed must stay outside the camp for seven days. On the third and seventh days, you must purify yourselves and your captives. Purify every garment as well as everything made of leather, gold, wood. Then Eliezer, the priest, said to the soldiers who had gone into battle. This is what is required by the law that the Lord gave. Gold, silver, bronze, iron, tin, lead, and anything else that can be with, that can withstand fire. Must be put through the fire and then it will be clean. But it must be purified with the water of cleansing. And whatever cannot withstand fire must be put through that water. On the seventh day, wash your clothes and you'll be clean. Then you may come into the camp. I'm gonna emphasize in this. Clothes. Gold. Silver. Bronze. It's echoed all the scriptures. You must be wondering, why is it so significant? To put these, uh, articles of gold in the fire? I'll give you one hint, Job. He was afflicted. You see, when. I gotta find that scripture. It just came to mind, but Elihu. It was Bill Dad. So far. And Eliphaz, the friends of Job. But Elihu, who was younger than, than. Job, are preferring pleasure. Rather than affliction. And as, as a follower of Christ. We're trained to endure the, because it's written. Though righteous man has many afflictions, the Lord delivers him from them all. But we endure hardship as soldiers, affliction as soldiers. Why? Because these afflictions are refining silver. And testing us as gold. I'm gonna read these verses to you. Joshua, chapter six, verse nineteen. All the silver and gold and the articles of bronze and iron are sacred to the Lord. And must go into his treasury. Want y'all to know that these articles of silver and gold and bronze and iron are redeemed. Born again. People. When Jesus on the last day gathers his elect from the four winds of this earth. He's collecting the silver, gold, bronze, and articles of iron. And clothes. What does, what do clothes have to do with this? You see, when we are clothed in. These, in these perishable clothes, these mortal bodies. We're going to be clothed with resurrected bodies. These are the clothes that God is talking about. So I want to read you some more verses that gives you hints of God's salvation plan for his people. Exodus, chapter twelve, verse thirty-five. The Israelites did as Moses instructed and asked the Egyptians for articles of silver and gold. And for clothing. The wealth, this is Zechariah, chapter fourteen, verse fourteen. The wealth of all the surrounding nations will be collected, great quantities of gold and silver and clothing. Nahum, verse nine. Plunder the silver. Plunder the. Plunder the silver, plunder the gold. The supply is endless, the wealth from all its treasures. Haggai, chapter two, verse nine. This is the Lord speaking. This silver is mine, and the gold is mine, declares the Lord Almighty. The glory of this present house will be greater than the glory of the former house, says the Lord Almighty. And in this place, I will grant peace, Almighty. Malachi, chapter three, verse seventeen. On the day when I act, says the Lord Almighty, be my treasured possession. I will spare them just as a father has compassion and spares his son who serves him. Then we go back to Zechariah, chapter thirteen, verse nine. This thir, I will put into the fire. I will refine them like silver and test them like gold. They will call my name, and I will answer them. Say they are my people, and the Lord is our. So when you read closely, the Holy Spirit will reveal that God plans to collect his treasured people for an immortality or wedding clothes. That's why when we go to Luke, chapter twelve, Jesus is saying, why are you worrying about the temporal things of this world, getting food and clothes for the body? Isn't the body more than clothes? Look at the bigger picture. You will be hungry again. These clothes will be torn again. And when I read this, it's, it opened my heart to understanding. Let's read, uh, Luke, chapter twelve. Verse twenty seven. And I'll end it. I'll end it, uh, on, on to verse thirty one. So from twenty seven to thirty one, Luke, chapter twenty twelve, Luke, chapter twelve, verse twenty seven through thirty one. Consider how lilies grow. They do not labor or spin. And I'm gonna tell you one thing right there. We are the lilies. We don't have to labor or spin. All we gotta do is rest in the finished work of Christ. The lily of the valley, right? So we are, we are also lilies. Yet I tell you, not even Samon in all his splendor was dressed like one of these. So Samuel was the wealthiest, wisest king on earth. And even in all his splendor, he was not arrayed like one of us who are dressed in immortality. If that is how God clothes the grass of the field, which is here today and tomorrow is thrown into the fire, how much more will he clothe you? You of little faith. Do not set your heart on what you will eat or drink. Do not worry about it. For the pagan world run, the pig runs out of such things, and your father knows that you need them. But seek his kingdom, and these things will be given to you as well. I love testimonies because I write about, uh, I'm starting to, and I'm, I'm and I'm seeing, the scene of parallels, I'm seeing. I'm connecting the dots. Check him out. He's a vessel of God. Philip Anthony Mitchell. His church is na, it was originally named Victory Church, but he changed it to twenty eight nineteen, which is short for Matthew twenty eight, chapter twenty, verse nineteen. It's a mission that Jesus gave his disciples, and the commission was to make, uh, disciples in all nations. Here's a common thread, you know, Scott had his struggles. I had my shortcomings and not my struggles. And he talked about how he had his family, he's a family of six, four children. His, his wife had to go look through the garbage to get a car seat. They had to go to uniforms because they couldn't afford or McDonald's. And year after year, people at his church starving. God raised somebody to cook for them. And I see when we were falling short, even now to this day, I see God using people to show his hand to say, hey, I got you. I even shared some, I had so much chicken, I even shared some chicken with Scott. And I'm like, you know, we're like, that had to be God. This had to be God. And I heard this also from a servant. You don't work, you don't eat, right? But when you are in tune with God, you, you get to understand that you have an assignment, you're commissioned. As long as you are focused on building the kingdom, it's gonna give you something to eat. If you work for the kingdom, God for you. So be a good witness. It doesn't have to be something spectacular. Smile. Say, hey, Jesus loves you. Remember, Jesus was mindful of the little placed in the offering plate. So he observes and sees the little things, even a glass of cold water. For someone who is thirsty, you give that to someone who was spreading the word. That is, that touches God's heart. So I see, if you don't work, you don't eat. And I was sharing with Brother Scott the other day. I said, let me look for a scripture. And I was looking through the scriptures randomly. I said, I'm gonna turn the page, whatever my finger points on, I know that's God speaking to me. And I saw in Proverbs, it says, a, a son who sleeps at harvest is a disgrace. And I was crushed. I said, oh, man, God, why are you being so mean to me? You know, you know what I'm going through. I'll get back at it. And I was like, man, I start doing what I gotta, I gotta start just being a witness. And not trying to side away from people with the mechanical work and going home and feeding the kids, picking up Caleb from school into a loaf. But God will rebuke his children. And he does have look at these scriptures, is, and I say, you know what? If God is eavesdropping and he's listening to conversations that we have, and we see from the scriptures, it touches his heart. So continue to acknowledge him wherever you go. And you, you just see God providing. It just can't be stagnant. You can't just stay home. You gotta fellowship with us. You gotta encourage one another. Especially the family believers. You gotta look out for one another. So yes, we are the silver and gold clothed in Christ, Jesus. We cannot come to God in any other clothes. Our Father, Adam, tried to clothe himself in fig leaves. For shame. And we all, you know, humanity, human nature, they try to clothe themselves with man-made religions, the Muslim faith, Mormons, L and G whites. I'm gonna say, yeah, that church is not put on the God. It was built on a false revelation. They try to predict the coming of Christ. Christ, they made excuses. Father still believed in a staky ground. But anybody who's trying to clothe opinions, their own self-righteousness, it's not gonna cut it. You need to be clothed Christ. You need to be covered in his blood. There is no other way. So be thankful. Not even Samon is arrayed like you. All right, let's go back to numbers thirty one. Let me just get there. The Lord said to Moses, so the priests and the family of heads of the count all the people and animals that were captured. Divide the spoils equally between who took part in the battle and the rest of the community. From the soldiers who fought in the battle, set apart as a tribute for the Lord. Out of every five hundred, whether people, cattle, sheep, take this tribute from their half chair and Eliezer, the priest, as the Lord's part. From the Israelites' half, select one out of every fifty, whether people, cattle, donkeys, sheep, or other animals. Levites, who are responsible for the care of the Lord's tabernacle, as we see, I'm gonna read this, the Lev they have no possession. God is their possession. And in Matthew, God is, should be our treasure. And I, I remember, uh, putting, when I first discovered about the rich young ruler, I said to myself, the rich, the rich young ruler was looking at the and he didn't know that. And then, uh, my friend's, uh, father's funeral, and he said, in his eulogy, he was talking about the rich young ruler. I was like, Sam, now look. Ask him. As Brother Scott will always talk, always, always hear me saying, man, this is crazy. I still say to this day, I said, that is crazy. How is that possible? But it just confirmed, Jesus is our treasure. He's our inheritance. And as we are his inheritance. And, uh, I'll, I'll read that. About, I'm gonna go to, this is a little brief journey. I'll take you, I'll journey to Ezekiel, chapter forty four. Just to remind us that, um, we really shouldn't be, we shouldn't be obsessed with possessions. Don't let possessions have you. If we have clothes on our back, we let's just be content with that. Be thankful. This is Ezekiel, chapter forty four, verse twenty eight. I am to be the only inheritance the priests have. You are to give them no possession in Israel. I will be their possession. Let's like, let's go take this branch to Matthew. Matthew, chapter six. Do not store for yourselves treasures on earth where moths and vermin destroy and where thieves break in and steal. But store for yourselves treasures in heaven where moths and vermin do not destroy and where thieves do not break in and steal. For where your treasure is, there your heart will be also. We're learning that Jesus is our treasure. And wherever is there, our heart will be also. I also, I know I'm a little bit, but I wanted to reveal to you that again, in Hebrews, chapter eleven, verse twenty four. By faith, Moses, when he had grown up, refused to be the son of Pharaoh, Pharaoh's daughter. He chose to be mistreated along the people of God rather than to enjoy the fleeting pleasures of sin. He regarded disgrace for the sake of Christ as a greater value than the treasures of Egypt because he was looking toward his reward. And his reward, as we all know, is Christ Jesus. That's why the Levites are God's possession and God are the Levites' possession. I'm gonna go to Hebrews just to give you, I know we went over this before, but it's always, it's always good to drink the words of God. They bring us revelation. They regenerate our hearts. And, uh, it's beautiful to know why the Levites were not supposed to have any possessions, but whatever portion they could, any portions that they give to them, God will order that. They were, when we talk about in Malachi, give the tithes and offerings, bring it to his house for the Levites. And at that time, the Levites ate from as of the Israelites' crops. They ate the offerings. And it's just again, a picture of them eating Christ. There's so many ambiguities, but we can also look at it from this angle. I'm going to go to Hebrews, I believe, chapter seven. Disparth, man. And, uh, okay. Hebrews, chapter seven, verse four through ten. Sounds lengthy, but it's not. Abraham rescued his nephew Lot, refused the the, the, from Sammon and Gomara. And whatever plunder he attained from those who took his nephew captive, this is what he decided to do. And I, uh, this, Melchizedek is Jesus. Thing is same beginning. We know that Jesus has no beginning. He's from everlasting. So it is written, just think how great he was. Even, I'll go even further than that. This Melchizedek was king of Salem and he's a he met Abraham returning from the defeat of the kings and blessed him, and Abraham tenth of everything. Melchizedek means king of righteousness. Whose righteousness do we need? My faith, not our own. Righteousness of Christ, my faith. King of righteousness, then also king of Salem, which means king of peace. Without father or mother, without genealogy, without beginning of days or end of life, resembling the son of God, he remains a priest forever. Just think how great he was. Even the patriarch Abraham gave him a tenth of the plunder. Now the law requires the descendants of Levi who become priests to collect a tenth from the people, that is, from their fellow Israelites. Even though they also are descended from Even though they also are descended from Abraham, this man, however, did not trace his descent from Levi. Yet he collected a tenth from Abraham and blessed him who had the promises. And without doubt, the lesser is blessed by the in the one case, the tenth is collected by people who die. But in other case, but in the other case, by him who was declared to be living. One might even say, now, pay close attention. One might even say that Levi, who collects the tenth, paid the tenth through Abraham. Because when Malchazadec met Abraham, Levi was still in the body of his ancestor. So when the Levites made a tenth to Malchazadec through Abraham, they were in the loins of Abraham. This reciprocity, now they're getting the lights. Offerings. Because is providing for them. And now, in this day and age, we are priests. We all, we are a part of a royal priesthood. When you're born again, you're no longer living for yourself. It's, it's, it is, we have a life transplant. And Jesus is living inside of our hearts. And we are priests that work every day. It's a gift. It's a privilege. It's more than an honor. We can't you just gotta say, hey, thank you. He's our possession. He's taking care of us just the way he took care of the Levites. It's more than an honor. Okay, now we're gonna go to numbers thirty two. Um, before I do, let me just finish reading thirty one. It's pretty much they're splitting worlds and the plunder evenly. Everybody's having a fair portion. And, um, and then we'll go to thirty two. Okay, so half the share of those who fought in the battle was three hundred thirty, um, three hundred thirty seven thousand five hundred sheep, of which the tribute for the Lord was five. So we see that the plunder remaining, I'm gonna go back to third verse thirty two, the plunder remaining from the spoils that the soldiers took was six hundred seventy five thousand sheep, seventy two thousand cattle, sixty one thousand donkeys, and thirty ti- thirty two thousand women who had never slept with a man. The half share of those who fought in the battle was, and, and, and gives you the numbers. And, uh, because they took, um, fifty out of every, I think, if we read earlier that, um, um, as we read here, they took a portion of, um, their plunder. So one, um, they took a portion, the Lord's part, every fifty. Right? So out of the fifty, so now we see this out of every fifty, the Lord's portion was six hundred seventy five for sheep, cattle seventy two, donkeys sixty one, people thirty two. Moses gave the tribute to Eliezer, the priest, as the Lord's part, as the Lord commanded Moses. The half belonging to the Israelites, which part from that of the fighting men. The community's half was three hundred thirty seven thousand five hundred sheep, thirty six thousand cattle, thirty thousand monkeys, and sixteen thousand people. From the Israelites' half, Moses selected one out of every fifty people and animals as the Lord commanded him and gave them the le- gave to the Levites who were responsible for the care of the Lord's tab- tabernacle. Then the officers were over the u- then the officers who were over the units of the army, the commanders of thousands and commanders of hundreds went to Moses and said to him, your servants have counted is under our command and not one is missing. So we have brought as an offering to the Lord, the gold articles again. The gold articles, each of us bracelets, s- signet rings, earrings, and necklaces to make torment for ourselves before the Lord. Again, this is the foreshadow of the true redeemed believers. So anytime you hear articles of gold, silver, brought to the treasury of God, that's us. Again, going back to Malachi, the offering is Jesus. First fruits are us, we are being bringing, he's bringing us back to his barn, back to the house. Okay? And again, you made the connection leads to the branch of John, chapter fourteen. I go prepare a place for you. If I wasn't going to prepare a place for you, I would not told you, but I'm gonna prepare a place for you, so where I am, you'll be also. In my father's house, there are many mansions. We are mansions when we receive, when we receive our resurrected bodies, no blemish. We are the stones, we are the mansions that make up the house of God, who is Christ Jesus. Articles of gold and silver. So all the gold from the commanders of thousands and commanders of hundreds that Moses and Eliezer presented as a gift to the Lord weighed sixteen thousand seven hundred fifty shekels. Each soldier had taken plunder. Moses and Eliezer, the priests, accepted the gold from the commanders of thousands hundreds and brought it into the tent of meeting as a memorial for the Israelites before the Lord. So again, you, you are gold and silver, bronze. Ten. You are highly valued. Father said to the son, these are your per- people, they're worth dying for, redeem them. We see that in when whenever we get a chance to, I'm giving you a little glimpse of Ruth. That was a foreshadow of the head kinsman redeemer and Boaz is the redeemer next in line. The head kinsman redeemer says, I cannot endanger my estate. You go down there and redeem it. It's pretty much saying the father saying, I can't leave heaven. You wanna have a people for yourself, son? You need to go down there and redeem them yourself. And we see that echoed in the story of Ruth. And Boaz deems the property of the dead. And away me. Ruth. It's a picture of Christ. I can go on and on. So let's, let's go to numbers, chapter thirty two. Now we see the tribes of Israel are named after the brothers of Joseph. So Reuben has a tribe called the Reubenites and Gad, another older brother, the Gaddites. Now, um, before I embark in this chapter, I, I wrote this down, I really not take in my own words. But I want you to understand there are people who are in your life for a season. And I know because of our emotions, we, we have, we, we do have emotional ties with these people. But don't cling to them. People are in your life for a season to help you along the way in your journey to the kingdom. Please do not cling to them, or they will hinder your relationship with Abba and your bridegroom, Christ Jesus. Let them go. Now the Reuben, Reubenites and the Gaddites, they were armed to help the Israelites cross over the Jordan River. And in exchange, they receive the land on the other side of the Jordan River. Now, because of Moses' wit, I'm just giving you a brief preview, saw the land where the Israelites were settled. And they knew that was good for their livestock. But Moses said, hey, if you want us to give us land, you better help us fight whoever is in opposition, because we're going to the promised land and there's a possibility we'll face people we have to fight. So arm yourselves to help us. You can make fortified, you can fortify some cities for the safety of your, your woman and children. But you know what? Okay, we'll give you that. You can secure them, you can provide them security, but you're gonna fight for us. You're not gonna get this for nothing. So let's read. The Reubenites and Gaddites, who had very large herds and flocks, saw that the lands of Jezre, Gilead were suitable for livestock. So they came to Moses and Eliezer, the priests, and to the leaders of the community and said, Adarath, Dippen, Jezre, and Nimra, Heshburn, Alialay, Sabon, Nebel, and Beon. The land of the Lord subdued before the people of Israel are suitable for livestock and your servants have livestock. If we have found favor in your eyes, they said, let this land be given to your servants as our possession. And do not make us crawl. Moses said to the Gaddites and Reubenites, should your fellow Israelites go to war while you sit here? Why do you discourage the Israelites from crossing over into the land the Lord has given them? This is what your fathers did when I sent them from Canaedus, Barnia, to look over the land. After they went up to the valley of Escol, they viewed the land and they discouraged the Israelites from entering the land the Lord had given them. So these were foreigners that they were responsible for the bringing a bad report. And because of that, every day they took to scope out the land, to survey the land. It was exchanged for a year. So they took forty days to spy the land. And God now said, it's forty years. I know I'm gonna take a little stop here. You, you, you're going to see that we sharing Christ. Just look at the pattern. When, when Jesus was born, he was brought to Egypt, just the way the Israelites from Abraham to Egypt. Now we see that after Jesus comes out of Egypt, comes back and, and after he gets baptized, he goes to a wilderness for forty days. We see the Israelites going to desert for forty years. These power that we were already in Jesus, already crucified with him. And now we're going to see this manifest in our lives. We have to fight giants. But thankfully, because of God's grace, we already have the victory. And the devil knows that. So if you're being viciously attacked, you exclude it. People are looking down on you. People accusing you of you being a bigot because you're saying that homosexuality is bad and, and, and referring to Zodiac signs and is bad. Be thankful. So there that will help you again, as I read my notes, their, their, their purpose is to help you in that season. But sometimes when we keep clinging on to them, they're gonna hinder us from going to the promised land. Let them go. Let them go. As is written in, uh, Jonah, those who cling on to idols forfeit the love and mercy that God has for them. Let them go. So after they went up to the valley of Escol and viewed the land, they discouraged it entering the land. So because of Moses' fear of other foreigners, helped them scope out the land that they were supposed to, uh, take. They gave a discouraging report, saying that we were nothing but ants compared to these giants there. Because they have not followed me whole, so now after discouraging the Israelites and the Lord had given them, the Lord's anger was aroused that day and the so, um, and he swore this oath. Because they have not followed me wholeheartedly, not one of those who are twenty years old or more, when they came up to, out of Egypt, will see the land I promised on oath to Abraham. Not one except Caleb, Deafna, the Kenizzite, and Joshua, son of Nun, for they followed the Lord wholeheartedly. Lord's anger burned against Israel, and he made them wander in the wilderness until the whole generation of those who had done evil in his sight was gone. And here you are, a brood of sinners, standing in the place of your fathers and making the Lord even more angry with Israel. If you turn away from the following him, he will again leave all his people in the wilderness, and you will be the cause of their destruction. Then they came up to him and said, we would like to for our livestock and cities for our women and children. But we all, we will arm ourselves for battle and go ahead of the Israelites until we have brought them in into their place. Meanwhile, our women and children will live in fortified cities for protection from the inhabitants of the land. And we will not return to our homes until each of the Israelites has we will not receive any inheritance with them on the other side of the Jordan, because our inheritance has come to us on the east side of the Jordan. Then Moses said to them, if you will do this, if you, you will arm yourselves before the Lord, for all of you who are armed across for the Lord until he has driven his enemies out before him. Then, when the land is subdued before the Lord, you may return and be free from your obligation to the Lord and to Israel. And this land will be your possession before the Lord. But if you fail to do this, you'll be sinning against the Lord, and you may be sure that your sin will find you out. Build cities for your women and children and pens for your flocks, but do what you have promised. The Gaddites and Reubenites, we, your servants, will do as the Lo- our Lord commands. Our children and wild fox and herds will remain here in the cities of Gilead, but your servants, every man who is armed for battle will cross over to fight before the Lord, just as our Lord says. Then Moses gave them to Eliezer, the priest, and Joshua, son of Nun, and and of the Israelite tribes. He said to them, if the Gaddites and Reubenites, every man armed for battle, cross over the Jordan with you before the Lord, then when the land is subdued before you, you must give them the land of Gilead as their possession. But if they do not cross over with you armed, they must accept their possession with you in Canaan. If they're armed, they get to receive Gilead as their possession. If they refuse to be armed, they have to accept their possession with you in Canaan. So that means they have to cross over the Jordan with you, leave their families and be with you. But if they're armed, they can take advantage of this this transaction and have possession on the other side of the Jordan. The Gaddites and Reubenites answered, your servants will do what the Lord has said. We will cross over the, um, over before the Lord into Canaan armed, but the property we inherit will be on this side of the Jordan. Then Moses gave to the Gaddites, the Reubenites, and the half tribe of Manasseh, son of Joseph, and the kingdom of Zion, king of the Amorites, and the kingdom of Og, king of Baishen, the whole name with its cities, with its cities and the territory around him. The Gaddites build up Davan, Ar- Atarath, Aurora, Atroth, Shafan, Jezre, Jag, Be'ah, Beth Nimra, and Beth Haran as fortified cities, and built pens for their flocks. And the Reubenites built, rebuilt Heshburn, Alialay, and Keritham, as well as Nebel and Bel Mian, and Shiva, Sivma, I mean, Sivma. They gave names to the cities they rebuilt. The descendants of Maker, son of Manasseh, went to Gilead, captured it, and drove out the Amorites. Son of Manasseh went to Gilead, captured it and drove out the Amorites who were there. So Moses gave Gilead to the. Makarites, the descendants of Manasseh, and they settled there. Jair, a descendant of Manasseh, captured their settlement and called them Havath. Jair. And Nobah captured Canaan and its surrounding settlements and Nobah's after himself. Again, in this journey. Some people will help us along the way. But that doesn't mean they have to, they're gonna be a part of our journey to the ultimate promised land. These are foreshadows of what we face today. Could be families, just like Jesus said, he who loves. His Father more than me is not worthy of me. We share in the afflictions of Christ. We, we wandered in the wilderness. And it's manifested in our lives. It's a, a strong indication that we belong to him by grace. Some have faced. Many accusations, we're out of our minds. You know, uh, to reassure you, to give you comfort, Mary. His brothers, they, they, his brothers, his family, they didn't believe he was the Messiah. Word went around and they. They heard that, hey. Go get your boy. He's sitting down in the house. He can't even sit down in the house. It's so packed. You need to fetch your boy, Mary, cuz he's out of his mind. Read it some. And so when they went to fetch him, Jesus. Someone would say, hey, hey, Jesus, your family's here for you. And with wisdom. Jesus said. Whoever does the will of my fathers, my mother. And brother. So to avoid that embarrassment in the middle of a, uh. And his family's out to fetch him. Because they were taught that he's out of his mind. So you're gonna get that. If they hated me, they're gonna hate you. They're gonna think you, if they thought I was out of my mind, they're gonna think you're out of your mind. You're going against this modern day culture. But this lesson shows. You have to have discernment. You gotta know who's there with you full-fledged all the way. Look after the, your, and I learned today, again, I learned from twenty eight nineteen. Please, take care of your spiritual family. I don't care. You probably think, oh, that's cold hearted. Yeah, take care, your. Spiritual family has more weight than your family. And I'll say, if they're not believing, of course. They're part of Christ. They're part of the, the house of Christ. I'm not. That's your family and responsibilities, but if, again. If you get a call from, let's say, a cousin. You see your spiritual brother in need. He's struggling with repentance. Whatever he has concerns about. Take the call. Yes, of your spiritual brother, sister. They're your permanent family. So in this story. In chapter thirty-two. Yes, we, people will help us along the way, but discernment. Some can't come all the way with us. And I'll read in, uh, First John. First John, chapter two or three. And don't get discouraged. If people leave. They did that to Jesus too. And then I'll close, okay? Yet I want to encourage you. Because I know. That's a love, a sense of belonging. We'd love to receive the approval. Of others. And I'm gonna read it to you. First John, chapter two, verse nineteen. They went out from us. But they did not really belong to us. But if they had belonged to us. They would have remained with us. But their going showed that none of them belonged to us. It's very horrific at first. I can remember. Having. Conversations and praying with. Other believers and all of a sudden. What happened? And, uh, uh, I've heard this saying. Yeah, I tried Jesus, but it didn't work out. They never. Belong to us. Now me. As a human. Even if I hear that, I'll still pray for that individual. Because I know it took streams to people, left and right, to tell me about this good news. And I shunned them, shunned them, shunned them. Until God. Laid and afflicted me. Going through homelessness and. Going through all kinds of hardships. And I've realized in this journey, that's what God does. He. He rebukes and disciplines those he loves. Be earnest and repent. Keep it one hundred with God. He knows your heart better than you do. Don't try to mock him and say, oh, you know. Tell him straight up. That parable that, uh, Brother Scott read in Matthew, chapter twenty-one, verse twenty-eight. Yeah, that's, that's us. I ain't going to follow Jesus. I ain't going to pick up no Bible. And all of a sudden you realize, all right, I'll do it. There's one another. Be your brother and sisters, keep especially in the house of God, your family. This is our community. And we are a reflection of God because in the Godhead is commu, the Father, Son and Holy Spirit. Community. If there are others who are hindering in your walk, you need to come off. Darkness. But again, be that light on the hill. Let them know where you are. And always have the door open for them. Uppermizing. Or trying to cater to their emotions. No. There's no time for that. So again, um, I love you guys and. I want you to really dig into scriptures on your own time. And by God's grace, we'll have these verses, uh, text to you. And we'll have this Bible study session, uh, recorded. And, uh, we'll download it and have it on, uh, the YouTube platform. I'll even have it on Facebook or, uh, my Instagram. And, uh, just to encourage you, please let people know about your testimony. Let them know about the encounters you received from, from Jesus. And let them know that the redeemed. We, we were never good, but. Because now we can express hope. When you know that you receive the gift. You receive the gift of God. You got a good man. You know, it's, it's painful, but you got a good. You are royalty. All right, Brother Scott, I'm done. Uh, are there any questions and concerns, please? Please, please feel free to come to the table. As mentioned before, this. Pertain to tonight's study. You have any questions and concerns about your salvation? Please re, feel free to come to the table.
Yes, as Brother Lyndon. So obviously extended an invitation. Are there any questions, comments, concerns? And once again, beloved. Even if it doesn't pertain to tonight's study. Just, just come forth to the table. Again, if you feel more comfortable texting me outside of study or in privacy. You have my number. I just wanna put it out there. You feel free to text me, even call me at any given time. If you call me and I'm asleep. Just give me a chance to sit up, splash my face a little bit. Because your time is of our great importance. Whatever concerns you, concerns us. So again, we extend the invitation. Any questions, comments or concerns? That brings tonight's study to a pause, I like to say. Beloved, um. We need Bible study. We all need Bible study. And like Brother Lyndon and I tell you, from time to time, from time to time. You're not gonna find, um. Our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ just in our camp alone. See, back in the days. Of the children of Israel, yes. Yes. God was found only in the children of Israel's camp. But you have to understand. That God, as he so illustrated with his transaction with Pharaoh. God speaks to the world. Today we have so many wonderful platforms. So many wonderful, godly and faithful ministers and pastors. Bible study groups and they're just wonderfully carrying on the campaign. Of getting out the whole world to the whole world. And I tell you, when we undertook. To be a part of that. Great company. I really did not know what I had in store. It's like I said. You know, tradition has it, there are books like Numbers and Leviticus. We're gonna touch Obadiah. We're gonna touch, um, some of the, what you would say, not as famous books as the. Song of Solomon, Hosea, Amos. Obadiah, Michael. Micah, Habakkuk, Haggai, some of these. Less, what you would say, less famous books. Numbers and Leviticus is a part of that group, but I tell you. These books are just blowing me away. And I bless God that he's allowed. Us. Us to be a part of this great transaction. Because one day, if we all exit faithfully, we'll all be in God's kingdom. But let me tell you. Scripture, and I believe scripture, I believe every portion of scripture again. To, you know, for the sake of, um, reiteration. I said to Lyndon, as we were bringing this trans, you know, bringing this. To a, a, um, to fruition. I said, Lyndon. What does the scriptures mean to you? I said, what is Genesis, chapter one, verse one through Revelation, chapter twenty-two, verse twenty-one, what does that mean to you? He said, that's my guide, that's my book, that's my camp, my compass. And speaking of that, beloved, I have a little, um. A, a little, uh, I call it a text. It's called the holy, the holy Bible, the mind of God. And I just read a little bit. It says, the holy Bible, as the word of God, shows the state of man, the way of salvation, the doom of sinners. And the happiness of believers. I'm gonna send that out, teaching every one of us upon, um. Us saying goodnight to each other. And so Lyndon, you know, he assured me, hey, the Bible is my first, foremost and final word and authority. I say, that's, that's, that's good enough for me. So let's do this. Beloved, we want the word. To get into you. And I mean, get into you because we want to see y'all on the other side. We want y'all to be in God's kingdom as much as we desire ourselves to be in this kingdom. Like Lyndon said. When y'all talk to Scott and Lyndon, y'all are not talking to two perfect cats. No, y'all are not. Y'all are not talking to two perfect, sinless. Born with a silver spoon. Died with a golden bucket dudes. You're talking to some two off the hook dudes. But God looked down from heaven and said, I love those two off the hook. Guys. Remember I told y'all. Brother Lyndon and I love Christ because Christ first loved us. And the whippings and the spankings and the chastisements. And the heartaches and the lonely nights and the cries. All of that God was shaping us. You think gold has it easy when it's being purified? No. He's held by some hot tongs, put into some hot fire. He's put into some fire. That I believe will make my oven, even at its highest temperature, seem like it's cold. But beloved, don't y'all see how beautiful that borrowed gold is? It's so beautiful that each and every one of us here tonight would love to have a borrowed two or three or four or five hundred. Don't you think that we are more precious than gold? Remember, Jesus didn't die for gold. Jesus died for you. Me, the world. So beloved. Again, please. Make these studies for yourselves, personalize it, read the scriptures. Like we learned tonight in our review, twice a day. Offer that lamb twice a day. Wake up in the morning and pray. Thank you, Lord, for this day. I know it's snow out there. The temperature is minus fifteen, but even laugh about it. Say, thank you still. Because if you get me through this, I know that the sun is right around the corner. And then when you come to the closing of your day, say, thank you, Lord, oh. Getting you, you know, I'm so tired, I can't even get undressed. I'm getting in bed with my boots on and snow dripping from my shoes. But thank you, Lord Jesus. I can't believe I fell asleep staying in prayer. Do that. Twice a day, give your offerings to God. Bless them twice a day, seven days a week, twelve months of the year, three hundred sixty-five days, all the days of your life. Because remember, Brother Lyndon so beautifully puts. Puts it, this is dress rehearsal. Beloved, you're gonna see. And be in the presence of the Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit, millions of angels, Abraham, Isaac, Jacob, Mary, Joseph. Joseph of Arimathea, Ruth, Isaiah, Ezekiel, Nehemiah. Paul, Joe. Abel. Seth. You're gonna be in the presence of these people every day. It's not gonna be a week, weekend. It's not gonna be a, uh, sometimes love. You're gonna be in the presence of the Father every day. Start practicing now. Please start practicing now. Without further ado, Brother Lyndon, can you please bring tonight's study to a close? Keeping in mind Sister Margaret, mother. As well as Brother Paul's mother. And anyone else that you may know of and, um, just please bless this session with a beautiful closing word of prayer, Brother Lyndon.
Okay, let's all bow our heads. Okay, Father, we, we intercede for. Paul's mother, Sister Margaret's mother. Please comfort them. But mainly. Have their mo, their names in mind. We pray that their mothers' names are in Zion's registry. You know, you can do all things. And to him who believes, everything is possible. And to him who believes, everything is possible. So comfort them. And reassure. Your awesome, wonderful grace. Other now. In this journey. We see. We no longer belong to this world. As we take adventure in the wilderness. Keep us close to your bosom. Don't let anybody snatch us from you. As it is written. Everyone here who's in this prayer, bless them. Open their hearts to understanding. So that they too. Could enjoy the beauty of knowing you. In spirit and in truth. Help us to love one another. Help us even love our enemies. Especially those who've wounded us. And whatever sins we have committed unknowingly. Whatever sins we have committed knowingly. Please wash us clean from all unrighteousness. Help us to understand the beauty of being your presence. Give us repentance. Give us everything. So we can gaze upon your beauty. Forever and ever. You say this in the name of your one and only Son, our Savior and Lord, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I love you, brother. And thank you, loved ones, for sitting in and listening. At the feet of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. May God bless and watch over y'all's households. Happy wonderful holidays. We're in this. We're in what's affectionately known, the season for the season, and that's our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. And just, just to put this out there. If you get those that may argue, you know, how you know Jesus was born December twenty-fifth? He wasn't. Listen, listen. From our calendar, January first through to December thirty-first. And on the Jewish calendar, um, just to name a few months, um, Nisan, Bib. I don't really know all of the, uh, yeah, let me just read it right quick. These are the, um. Twelve months that are located on the Jewish calendar. Nisan, Yehudah, Sivan, Temes, Av. Ilal, Teshri, Chesven, Tesler, Tibet, Shavet, Adar. So between the Chris, the, the, um, American calendar and the Jewish calendar, Jesus was born one of those days. Hallelujah. Praise the Lord for that. It could have been December twenty-first. It could have been January third. It could have been the April fifteenth. But know this, he came, he lived, he conquered sin, he died on Calvary's cross. Now he's by the Father's right-hand side. Celebrate this December twenty-fifth as Christmas and help those to just know that our Savior came. And he's left for us an example to live for him and by him. And that, again. If just one person in his last two thousand years during Christmas season have come to Christ. That's two thousand and twenty-four souls that has been added to his kingdom. And we bless the Father for that. So once again, beloved, happy holidays. Merry Christmas to each and every one of you. My, 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 my daughter just said, Daddy, what about Thanksgiving? I guess I'm falling into the tradition. People just go straight from Halloween to Christmas. And so she's right. Happy Thanksgiving to each and every one of y'all. Uh, we're looking forward to bringing, um, Numbers to a conclusion. And we'll be sad to see it go. But he will be replaced by the Book of John. And please just read the scriptures. And like I said. If you don't understand it, there's so many beautiful commentaries on the YouTube, like Lyndon said, on Facebook. Uh, download the Bible. Just get a, uh, understanding, because we're all here to learn and to sit at our Father's feet. So we can hear him speak to us, so that we can know how better to serve him. So once again, from the Mason household, as well as the foster household, we bid each and every one of y'all a lovely good night. And may God watch over y'all until we get together again.
Thank you. Good night.
Yours, well, good night.
The journey continues.